Mobile City Planning Commission, I would like to take a moment to review our general operating procedures. Our meeting is divided into two sessions, the public hearing session and the deliberation session. In the public hearing session, an application or group application on the agenda is called. The applicant makes his or her presentation. Commission members ask questions, if any, and members of the public make their comments. Only four people may speak for an agenda item and for against. Each speaker is limited five minutes, subject to questions by the commissioners. And after four minutes, a speaker will hear a loud beep to indicate one minute left to speak. At this point, we ask that you summarize your comments. After all opposition speakers have finished, the applicant will be given time to respond. If you do intend to speak, please come to the podium. At the bottom of the stairs, speak into the microphone and give your name and address for our minutes. Please direct all comments to the commission only and not to the applicant or the audience. And please remember to speak directly into the microphone. On routine applications, the applicant may simply raise his or her hand if there are no objections to the staff recommendations. I will then announce that the applicant is in full agreement with those recommendations. If there are any questions, the applicant will be given an opportunity to respond. After hearing all applications, the commission will then go into the deliberation session. The commissioners discuss each application with input from the staff as necessary, but with no input from the audience. Commissioners will vote on each application and the results of the voting can be learned from the planning department. If some issues arise in the deliberation session that were not addressed in the public hearing, we have the discretion to either allow additional comments pertaining to those issues in order to resolve them or call for the application to be held over for discussion at a future meeting. Occasionally, one or more commission members may recuse themselves from discussing any voting and voting on a given application. A recusal does not necessarily mean the member is directly involved with the application or the applicant, but depending upon the circumstances, ethical rules may require a recusal when there's only the slightest appearance of a conflict of interest. The planning commission makes final decisions, subject to appeal on subdivisions, planning approvals, and planned unit developments, or PUDs. And the planning commission only makes recommendations to the city council on zoning applications. At this time, please turn your cell phones to vibrate or silent or off. Commissioners and staff, please remember to turn on your microphones when speaking. I'll call the roll, myself, Jay Stubbs, present, Mr. Alan Cameron, Ms. Jennifer Denson, Mr. Carlos Gant, Ms. Shirley Sessions.
Here.
Mr. Taylor Atchison, Mr. Matt Anderson, Mr. Nick Amberger.
Here.
Mr. Scott Jones, Ms. Susan Carley, Mr. Kirk Matei. We have a quorum and I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Set.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
The agenda passes. We'll move into number one on the agenda. Under new subdivision applications, the address is 269 North Dearborn Street. We have a recommendation from staff on tentative approval, subject to 11 conditions. Also noted that each of the commissioners have comments that were submitted online at your desk. Is the applicant for agenda item one present? Are you in agreement or do you need to make any comments? Please, sir.
I'm at 756 St. Louis Street and I'm the architect for the project. And we've been working with the downtown Mobile Alliance on this. And there were two comments that we would like to be changed or deleted. And one is the 25-foot driveway changed to 10-foot so that it complies with the T4 zoning in the area. And then the deletion of item number seven on page three, that was the driveway. And then also the right-of-way. We didn't want to give up any more property. It's in a downtown historic grid. So page three conditions... Okay, let me start. I'm sorry. So the right-of-way is, they asked for 50 feet. That's page three, condition two. We'd ask that that be taken off so that we could maintain the historic grid and keep the buildings pushed up to the street like the other houses. And then page three, condition seven, we're in a T4 area and driveway widths are limited to 10 feet. And there was a note that said 25 feet. So those are our two comments.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
If I may. Uh, Mr. Davis is correct. The driveway width is limited to 10 feet and we would recommend that change. Um, the issue regarding the dedication, staff feels generally speaking, it's likely moot. The problem is, if you look at the plat that was submitted, it's not a plat. It's an architectural plan with no right-of-way provided along each street. If you look at the actual plating of the streets, we were also able to pull up a recorded plat from within this block. Dearborn has 50 feet of right-of-way existing. Uh, it is standard on a right-of-way that is substandard in width for us to request dedication. In this case, like I said, I believe it'll be moot. But the right-of-way width for both streets will have to be shown on the final plat. But I don't think dedication's going to be required because it appears to be existing. It simply was not illustrated on the plat, plan submitted.
Engineering found the same.
Mr. Davis, you're in agreement with the conditions and we're in agreement on what Mr. Davis brought forward specific to the driveway. Commissioners will take note. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Is anyone here to speak for agenda item number one? Is there anyone here to speak against agenda item number one? Again, 269 North Dearborn Street. Seeing none, we'll move on to agenda item two. 907 Church Street. Recommended for tentative approval with six listed conditions. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement with all the conditions? Is there anyone else here to speak for 907 Church Street? Is there one here to speak against 907 Church Street? Seeing none, we'll move on. Under new planned unit development applications, number three, 701 Summerby Drive, the Berwick Park subdivision. Been recommended for approval with findings of fact, of which there are five listed, and 13 conditions. Is the applicant present?
Yeah. Roughing Ground, 6576 Airport Boulevard. I just want to make sure to... This thing's, we've been working on this for a couple of years now. The, uh, 11, 13 conditions. Has anything changed other than the kiosk, mail kiosk? The reason I'm here is because we have, we had to put a mail, we changed the PUD to indicate a mailbox kiosk. Really doesn't even show in that drawing. Which we've been dealing with traffic on and I think we've got that approved. What we submitted shows the mailbox kiosk.
We reviewed what was submitted, Senate Traffic Engineering and City Engineering. And these are the recommendations we received or we're putting forth.
Question, is what's in our package, is that the, is that the, is that the correct final version? Because I know we've...
No. The one that's shown right there actually isn't correct. The, um, set of plans that we're reviewing, that they're ready to start construction on, has that mail kiosk of parking spaces pushed back into the common area so that they're not in the right-of-way. So yeah, that's on the plans. It's shown correctly. But this, this one is a little bit older.
For my fellow commissioners, I think part of, part of the problem was with the plan that's in our package is the, uh, the driveway, the parking spots are like half on the common area, half in the right-of-way. All on the, on the private common area. What George is saying, we've got a drawing that reflects that. But it's just not the one that's in our package.
But I believe, uh, condition number eight and then subcondition three addressed that.
Three, four, three, four, five, six, is that like that?
No. If you go to condition number eight and then subcondition two.
I'm, I'm, I'm good with all that. I just, my, my issue was things popping up in this approval. They weren't approved in November.
What was approved in November was, went all the way back to 2018.
So really all we're dealing with today is, today is the kiosk, mail kiosk. We've not changed anything other than... My concern was that the pack didn't show what we'd submitted. We, we have no problem shoving mailboxes parking in the, in the common area.
So I'm, so I'm confused now. So, so this says that it was about AC units, but it's really about, but it's really about mailboxes?
Are you referencing in the, on the agenda where it says to include AC units taller than three feet? That was previously approved as part of the PUD. So the only amendment they're making now is providing a public mailbox kiosk for the development on the common area. That was previously approved and they're not changing that.
Okay. So this would just be the normal approval with the recommendations and everything we have in there? And that already includes the kiosk?
So this one drawing is what was, is what was originally approved. It's being modified, the one that shows. It says modified common area and how it could be removed. This, this is what, we go back to the very original approval, 18 or whenever it was. This was the original.
Correct.
So as it relates to today, as long as the applicant is good with condition eight, subsection two. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Face-to-face meetings are needed. Is there anyone else here to speak for this agenda item? Is there anyone here to speak against this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll move on. Under group applications, multiple addresses at Dawes Road, we have a subdivision and a PUD and a sidewalk waiver. I see on my agenda, recommended for holdover until the October 20th meeting for the subdivision and the PUD. Does that apply to the sidewalk waiver as well or not?
I believe we recommended the sidewalk waiver for denial. Now, if, if you want to go ahead and just talk and...
Yes, I see that now. Thank you. It's recommended for denial on the sidewalk waiver. My apology. So we have got a recommendation for holdover until October 20th on all, on subdivision and the PUD. And then a sidewalk waiver denial applicant is already at the podium.
Sir, good afternoon. I'm David DeSher with Engineering Design Group, 1000 East Laurel, Foley, Alabama. Our address, um, we did receive comments that we are still working through. Satisfied staff comments to have it more prepared for you, for your review and consideration. So, uh, we are working through those. Um, and we'll see back at the next chance that we have all those staff comments addressed.
Do you think October 20th is a legitimate date?
Yes, sir. And actually, um, talking with Marie and hoping that we could get to the sixth. I understand maybe a possibility.
Only if you have those revisions submitted by close of business tomorrow.
Sure. And I think we'll be, we'll be there. So.
Okay.
Yeah. We've been burning midnight oil to get it there.
Could you, go ahead. I was gonna say, could you see me after this so I can talk to you about this?
Yes, sir.
Question for staff. At the intersection of Old Government and Dawes. I know this is just a depiction, it's not a public plat, but it looks like the, the private property is encroaching over the road. We just need to make sure engineering and traffic looks at that. Find out whether or not there's a corner cut of real estate that's...
Yeah. And in my preliminary comment, um, I've told them they need to dedicate right-of-way there.
Yes, sir, I do. We've got some, uh, right-of-way to likely dedicate along Gladder as well. To get the minimum 60 foot there. Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else here to speak for agenda item four? Since it's on the agenda, it will still be held over. But if you're here to speak for this agenda item, you have the opportunity to speak. To the podium, sir. Either for or against this agenda item. You are now welcome to come down to the podium.
Mr. Chairman, while he's on his way, I just want to bring to the attention of the commission, you have a couple of comments on this at your places.
Thank you.
We just had a question about it, uh...
State your name, sir, and your address for our minute.
My name is Donald Howell.
Mr. Howell, your address, sir?
I live on Old Government Street Road. There's, uh, 7981 Old Government Street Road. There's only two houses facing this project. That's mine and Mr. Curt's here. My question was, and I really couldn't see which way those supposed to be 64 townhouses, which way they would be facing. Uh, would I be looking at somebody's backyard or front yard? Are they gonna be rental townhouses or sell townhouses? That was, uh, that was our question mainly, were they gonna face Old Government Street Road? Our houses?
Can you, can you go back one?
Margaret, while he's talking to them, this is zone B3. But it's gonna be used for R3. So is there a zoning requirement here?
As a PUD and as multifamily is allowed in R3, uh, it does say above the first or ground floor, but it's still an R3 use. And with the PUD, it can be located in a B3 district.
That answered my question. I would be looking at the backside of the townhouses from where we live, our two houses. So, uh, in lieu of that, I'd be against it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Howell.
Yeah, let's, see me after this. And I'll, I'd like to talk to y'all and the developer. I'm, I'm actually your city council rep. So we'll, we'll, we'll talk.
Sir, sir, did you have additional comments to do for the record or you were just in support of Mr. Howell? Okay. Thank you, sir. Again, agenda item number four. Is there anyone else here to speak against this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll move on. Agenda item five, 6960 C, Overlook Road and 1408 Cody Road North. We have a subdivision, a rezone recommendation. It's been recommended for holdover also to the October 20th planning commission meeting.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, the applicant was able to get additional information to the staff and you should have a revised recommendation at your seats. Um, you also have, uh, but we didn't have enough for everyone. But, Mr. Chairman, you have some letters at your seat uh, from concerns from neighboring property owners.
So everyone has this?
Yes, sir. All of the commission members.
All right. I'll restate, agenda item five, 6960 C, Overlook Road and 1408 Cody Road North. Been recommended for tentative approval, subject to 12 conditions, as well as the rezone for approval with conditions listed. Is the applicant present? And are you in agreement with the conditions on both the subdivision and the rezone? All right, applicant is present. Seeing as I have the only three copies of these, um, I'll do the best I can. Herman and Sonia Figures, 6964 Howells Ferry Road. Strongly oppose any rezone of 6960C, which is adjacent to my property on Howells Ferry Road. I feel that any rezoning can affect, cause more traffic, affect property value and the security of our neighborhood. Submitted by Herman and Sonia Figures. From Tasha Boyle, I am opposed to any and all rezoning of 6960C, which leads to my property on Overlook Road on 5433 Overlook Road. I feel very strongly about this. Any rezoning can affect more traffic and not to mention bring our property value down and would bring the security of our neighborhood into question. Submitted by Ms. Tasha Boyle. And the third and final, Ms. Brenda Koch. I am opposed to any and all rezoning of 6960C, which is adjacent to my property off Howells Ferry Road at 1601 Myland Avenue. Feel strongly about this. Any rezoning can affect more traffic and not to mention bring our property value down and would bring the security of our neighborhood into question. Submitted by Ms. Brenda Koch. Is there anyone else here to speak for agenda item number five? For or against? Okay. Anyone else for? Now against. Yes, ma'am. Come on down.
Good afternoon. My name is Alicia Johnson-Mose and I live at 6954 Howells Ferry Road. So 6960, um, number C is on the right side of me, on the right side of my home. Um, I'm with everyone else. I'm against it. Uh, we've been there almost two years now. And I'm definitely worried about, you know, safety as far as us having kids with a lot of traffic. I believe that would bring a lot of traffic. Uh, we already have a school, um, right there on Howells Ferry. So I mean, that's enough traffic. I just, I'm, I'm not for, you know, this. That was a really, a really good reason why we picked that home as well, seeing the open space, the neighborhood next to us, you know, everyone's really friendly, you know, kinda above our age. So, you know, they really look out for us, we look out for them. And I just don't think bringing a lot of homes or apartments or anything would be a good idea. Definitely concerned about safety with my two.
So the, the property, it, it is being subdivided, that doesn't mean a subdivision is going in.
Okay.
And, and the zoning that they're requesting is, is going from R3 and I think, what, B1?
Yes.
Yeah, and B1 to R1. So it actually means that the property's gonna be a less intense use than what it is now.
Okay.
So, so what's proposed, it, while it's called a subdivision, that doesn't mean a, necessarily that a subdivision is going in.
Okay.
That just means the lines on the map are changing.
Okay. So do we know approximately, like, are we talking single homes will be placed there? Do we know how many?
If it's, if it's being zoned to R1, it can only be single-family homes.
Okay. But we can't say how many?
Well, there's no plan for that. We don't know anything about that.
Okay.
We just have what's in front of us.
Okay. Well...
Which it...
Okay. Well, I would definitely want to be notified about that. But like I said, I'm fine with how it is right now. We were talking maybe one home or something. That would be perfectly fine with me, but multiple, um, it's...
Ma'am, if you look at the overhead here, this is the church that exists right now at Overlook and Cody.
Okay.
That's on lot one and it is proposing to remain.
Okay.
And that will remain, it's already zoned B1.
Okay.
And it'll stay as proposed, B1.
Okay.
Then they're creating two more lots. This large 20-acre lot.
Right.
And this smaller, less than one-acre lot.
Okay.
Those are the only two lots. They're additional lots they are creating. And those are proposed to be R1. So one home on each lot.
Okay. Okay. That, I mean, that's...
But that's for the time being. If they come back and want more lots, notice will be again posted.
Okay. We definitely, you know, want that notice. Because even this, um, I got this from a neighbor, like, we didn't receive anything. So we would've missed it if we, you know, didn't get anything sent. So however I can sign up for, so, you know, be notified, I definitely would like to be notified.
Margaret, are you still gonna recommend this be held over to October 20th?
The applicant submitted that they would be removing the improvements that extend beyond lot one that would've necessitated the PUD and planning approval. So we are now recommending approval based on those conditions that are at your, that are at your seats.
The developer here? I didn't see.
Yes.
Would you have any objection to holding this over two weeks and having a meeting with the residents and Gina Gregory, the city councilwoman, and, and being able to answer some of their questions before this move forward? Sure.
He's not the applicant. He, the Scott, Mr. Jones was asking of the applicant real quick.
Yeah, the applicant. Right. I, I, I understand that, but just hearing some of the comments today, it seems like there's a lot of the residents that's not sure what's going on. And if they had an opportunity to, for you to have a meeting with the city council rep and them and answer their questions, it'd probably get a lot, a lot easier. No, it would not. The rezoning would come to the city council anyway and, and it could get held up there if it, if it doesn't get held up here.
Well, since it has to go to city council anyway, I mean, you could, those things could just run concurrently.
We can do that.
If we pass it through here, then it's still gotta go through the process.
That, that's fine. That, that's fine. And, and we can go ahead and do this today and just so y'all know, I'll, I'll follow up with the city council representative. And between now and the time it comes to city council, I would, I would recommend that y'all have that meeting. And then when it comes before the city council, hopefully all of, all of the questions will have an opportunity to be answered for you. Does that make sense? Thank you.
And if there's... We'll allow...
Yeah, we still have the opportunity.
...else wants to speak and then the developer, you can speak at the end too. But you might be able to iron some of this out today too.
The young man in the good-looking purple shirt has an opportunity to speak. Come on down. Again, insert your name and address for the record.
My name is Herman Figures. I live right and adjacent to the property there, 6964 Howells Ferry Road. And my sentiments are very much like the young lady that was here. And our concern is one of the clauses says, "May consider zoning classification other than assault by the applicant for the property." Our concern is safety. I've been there since 2009, nice community. And the way us oldsters look at seniors, the more traffic into the area, the more crime can come into the area. More people, more violence, and that's our concern. Uh, we understand developers and their view and, uh, that just the way society is. For someone like me of an age, it's security. And, uh, we have a nice home. The property value's real good because of the home that we have. There are several homes like mine's too. Nice homes, nice area. Whenever a bunch of, uh, homes come in there, maybe apartment buildings, maybe a bunch of homes. And then too, the kind of people that purchase those homes, that can bring problems to our community, our neighborhoods. That's our concern. And that's why we adamantly oppose rezoning and any addition to the area.
I want to repeat what Ms. Anderson said. I'm gonna give y'all a copy of that. So everybody will understand. If you look at lot, that's two or three, big one. Lot two is currently zoned R3, which means apartment complexes could go there. This application downzones that 20-acre lot to R1. It only can be single-family residents. So if this was approved today, lot two could have one house on it. was approved today, lot two could have one house on it. And for, whi, which is a heck of lot better than an apartment complex, which could be done before this application or if we deny this application. If we don't allow the rezoning, he could go put an apartment complex there. So, this is a downzoning, which is preferred by neighbors, causes less impact on, on the neighborhood. And for them to come in and do anything else with that 20-acre lot, they have to come back before us and get approval. If they wanna subdivide it into 20 lots, they wanna get it rezoned to do an apartment complex, whatever it is, they've gotta come back here. So, this is a downzoning from multifamily to single-family, just, just so you'll understand.
Yes.
The, the church on the corner is B1, and it's staying B1.
Yes.
So, the only rezoning is, is that big lot in, in, in the small lot, which will be single-family residents. So, we approve it. You have two residents. It's the one that's on the small lot and one on the big lot.
That sounds more promising.
There you go. Yeah. If, if I were you, I'd say, yeah.
Yes, it sounds very much more promising. Cause we are concerned, and y'all would be too.
Sure.
Our community and who live next door to us is need. And thank you for that explanation.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Figures. Just to point, any notification on changes, what may or may not come through today would be, notification would go out.
Thank you very much. Oh, and by the way, too, we would not have been here because this came to my P.O. box and not to my home. None of the residents in the area got this notice, but me and my P.O. box. And that concerns me, too.
Notice for the rezoning goes out to all property owners within a 300-foot radius. And the mailing address used will be the mailing address from the tax assessor's office.
Yes.
So, if those addresses aren't current, they're going to, they're being mailed to whatever's on file with the tax assessor.
So, in other words, if you get your tax notice in the P.O. box, that's where the notice was, would've been mailed.
And by the way, too, my neighbor here lived right across from it, and they didn't get a notice either. Neither did, uh, Tasha Boyle. Didn't get a notice as, as, as well. And maybe they have taxes at their P.O. boxes, too, but, uh, and maybe not. But it only came to our P.O. boxes. And, and thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else here to speak on application, agenda item number five? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to number six, 975 Schillinger Road South, subdivision of the Brewer Center. A PUD. Subdivision is recommended for tentative approval with 11 conditions listed. PUD with five findings of fact and 12 conditions listed. Is the applicant present or in agreement with the conditions under the subdivision, and then the findings of fact and the conditions under the PUD? Is there anyone else here to speak for agenda item six? Anyone else here to speak against agenda item six? All right, seeing none, we will close the public hearing session, and we'll move back to agenda item number one. New subdivision application for 269 North Dearborn Street, the Miller Duplex subdivision, recommended for tentative approval with 11 conditions. The applicant was present, and we did have some discussion on the driveway. Entertain a motion?
Move to approve subject to staff recommendation, eliminating note number two, revising note number seven, ten B.
Second?
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Agenda item two, 907 Church Street, recommended for tentative approval with six listed conditions. Applicant was present and in agreement.
So, moved?
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. New planned unit development application. Number three, 701 Summerby Drive, recommended for approval with five findings of fact and 13 listed conditions.
Move to approve subject to staff recommendation with findings of fact, A, B, C, D, and E.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded with all five findings of fact. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Group application, agenda item four. Both subdivision and PUD recommended for holdover until October 20th. The applicant was present and in agreement. Excuse me, and the sidewalk waiver for denial.
Uh, I just wanna clarify. The applicant would prefer if he can provide the information by close of business tomorrow to be on the October 6th agenda. Otherwise, he would need to be on the October 20th agenda.
If they fail to do that, y'all can just move them to the 20th administratively, right?
Yes.
Well, then I would amend my motion to holdover until October the 6th. No, I thought we were gonna go ahead and... Yeah. I, I was just gonna hold over, I was gonna hold over the subdivision.
We'll take them separately for that purpose, Aunt Matt.
Okay.
Subdivision.
I would move to hold over the subdivision until October 6th.
Properly moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
PUD.
We have findings of fact on this one? Oh, that's right, yeah. Force of habit. Um, uh, I would move to hold over until October 6th.
Properly moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
And the sidewalk waiver.
Moved to deny.
Staff recommends sidewalk waiver for denial. We do not have any discussion with the applicant.
I would, so moved.
Just for clarification, we have a, a motion to approve the denial of the sidewalk, sidewalk waiver. Properly moved and seconded.
Yeah.
I've been dealing with this for years. Also, no, also to, yeah, so C is to not deny the sidewalk waiver. Properly moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Number five, 6960C, Overlook Road and 1408 Cody Road North. The applicant is present, recommended on the revised agenda for tentative approval with 12 conditions listed, as well as the rezone downgrade from R3 to R1.
Move to approve subject to staff recommendation.
Second?
Subject to staff revised comments.
Yes.
Properly moved and seconded on the revised comments and recommendations. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have... Again, call to vote, all in favor with one abstention? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And an abstention. The motion passes. Agenda item six, 975 Schillinger Road South. We have a subdivision and a PUD. The applicant was present or is present and in agreement with all the 11 conditions under the subdivision. We'll take them separately. Subdivision?
Move to approve subject to staff recommendations.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. And on the PUD, we have five findings of fact and 12 conditions listed. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve based on staff recommendation with finding of facts, A, B, C, D, and E.
Second?
Properly moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Any further business from staff? Seeing none, we'll adjourn. Thank you.